You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 2nd, 2023 meeting of the La Porte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the La Porte County Commissioners Meeting Wednesday, August 2nd at 10:00 a.m. Could we all stand for the pledge allegiance?
Rich?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Auditor, roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Grammerosa.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Brzezinski.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Consider approval of July 5th, 2023 minutes.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider of claims.
You missed the agenda.
Oh. Consider approval of agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider of claims, consideration of claims.
Yes, Madam President, we have payroll for the period 7/21/23 in the amount of $1,536,860.99 and operating expense claims in the amount of $4,099,240.39.
Move to approve the claims and payroll as presented.
Second.
I think that this is just for payroll or for the claims as well?
The motion was for claims and payroll.
Okay, so we have a problem with the claims. If you go to the claims page 39, there was a claim put through for Jones Law Offices for $9,610. And that claim never came to the Commissioners' office for approval. And I know that it's one of your concerns, Commissioner Haney, that everything be brought before the Commission before it goes to the Council.
Before it goes to the Auditor's Office, correct, yeah?
No, did they come and they ask approval to the Commission before it goes down to the Council in order to get approved? And then it would go to the Auditor's Office. Is that not your IC, one of your IC codes that you have always quoted?
Can you clarify that for me? This, this is coming from, this is coming as something that was sent to and approved by the Council with it was done. This is the payment for something that was from either the very beginning of this year or last year. So why, why the Council chose to wait a little while to actually approve the funds from the time it was approved earlier this year slash last year? I don't know, you would have to ask them, but. That would be a better question for them, I believe.
This claim should be paid out until it comes before the Commission.
Did we get an itemized bill on that?
This, this was the, the legal bill that the Council approved at their meeting in May. And, I'm sorry, in June. And it was, it was a line item, an appropriation of budget, so it's departmental, departmental through the Auditor's Office is the way we got direct authorization from the Council to pay it.
But in order to go to the Council, you need to come to the Commission first.
Well, Madam President, if I may, as an elected official, an elected official is not, for courtesy, they could come to the Commission, but as an elected official, they're not required to come to the Commission for approval to go before the Council. Department heads should, would get it by policy, but I, I don't think I've ever seen a statute that requires an elected official to go before the, requires them to come before the.
Actually, we had a workshop and we went to the Council to ask for $3 million to fund the complex project. And it was you who said that they did not come, and those are 10 elected officials. And you said that they did not come before the Commission first and you deferred to our attorney and you had it put on our agenda, correct?
Sort of, yeah. So, so, so it's important to understand the Auditor is the single lone elected official for the Auditor's Office. For example, the Commission is three elected Commissioners that speak together as a body through the Board of Commissioners. So the Board of Commissioners, in the example you just gave going before the Council, the Board of Commissioners did not vote collectively to speak as a board for that appropriation. An individual Commissioner, well allegedly, an individual Commissioner did once because nobody up here when we had that conversation, if you remember, I said I didn't, Commissioner Brzezinski said he didn't. You refused to answer whether if you did or not. So there's a complete difference here. I mean, the, the, each of our elected offices either speak through a lone elected official like the Coroner's Office, the Sheriff's Department, Auditor's Office, Treasurer. The Board of Commissioners speak as a body and the County Council speaks as a body.
So then the sheriff no longer has to come here and ask for any appropriations and he can go straight to the, to the Council?
If he sew shoes, absolutely, yes.
That is incorrect. We have always had our department, our elected officials come before the Commission. As you said out of your word, your own words, we propose, they dispose. And so it needs to come to us to propose it for the Council. I believe that with that, that this claim should be deducted from the claims and we should be given the opportunity to look at that bill.
So did we get a itemized bill for that?
Yes, there's an itemized bill for that. That was turned over to the Council. I thought it was turned over to the Commissioners, I don't recall whether it was or wasn't. I, I would just say that, I don't know, the Council itself has an attorney that's part of their budget. They don't come before, they don't come before you to get their, their attorney approved. So I, I think that this is a thicket and a rat's nest. I previously, with a previous Commission, there was a mandamus action where the Commission, you know, sued me. To me, well, I'll let the Council speak for itself, but this opens up a huge thicket, obviously, politically, but we, we thought it was okay to, to do it through our office because it was a direct, a budgetary authorization from, from the Council and an empowerment of the Auditor's Office with regard to a legal bill. So that, that gets into a catfight in my view between the, the Council and the Commission.
Well, the Commission had decided up here that we were going to go ahead and pay the attorneys the 175. And you interceded and you said we had to come back to the meeting again, we have to have it reapproved. So when, where, where does your authority end and where does our authority begin?
I'm not a work.
When, when you say we propose and the Council disposes, at what point do we decide and pick and choose who is going, going to have to come before the Commission and who is not going to have to come before the Commission? Because again, fairly young on this board, I have seen many elected officials come before the Commission before they go to the Council. Now you're selecting that he, that the Auditor does not have to come before the Commission. So it is not being paid out of his own personal budget. It's being paid out of riverboat. So at what point does the Commission get to have a say in, in something? When do we get to also see if we have to approve the claims? Then it shouldn't be on these claims, correct? Because if we're approving the claims, then we should be able to see what are in our claims. And we have not been given an itemized bill for these claims, so.
So, so there's a lot to unpack there. I think the, the simple answer is to simply look to the state statutes as to what's required. I mean, that's, that's generally the best way to default to. When, when we look at traditionally, so there, there are different things that happen here at the Commission. Some things are just traditionally done, some are required by statute, some are both. When we have an elected, when we have elected officials come before us to get, you know, permission to go to the Council, it's kind of a misnomer. They're giving us a friendly heads up more than anything because if there's a contract, for example, that needs to be signed, with the exception of certain explicit statutory exceptions, the Commissioners have to sign all contracts. So if, if XYZ elected official goes before the Council to get, buy cars, buy some cars, let's say. It would be good for them to give us a heads up so that they know if we're willing to sign off on that contract, even if the Council decides to approve that money. So you're, you're kind of muddling the waters here with several different things.
I think you've muddled the waters when you proposed that everything has to come before the Commission before it goes to the Council. You muddied that a couple of weeks ago.
No, I was simply trying to get us to follow the statute.
Motion to have it removed.
I'll second the motion, first of all, I'll second the motion for payroll. Just, just for payroll. Second the motion for payroll, so we can do that, then move on.
Do I have a second for payroll?
There, there's a motion on the floor. Are you amending my motion? Are you making a motion to amend the motion?
Yeah, I'll amend your motion that we paid payroll, not operating expenses yet. That'll be separate.
Okay, I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now vote on the motion to pass it for payroll.
We passed that, so now on claims?
No, we have passed the motion to amend the motion. Now we need to actually.
Just the amended.
Amended motion.
Thank.
But on the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For operating claims, I would make a motion to only approve whatever your figure is deducting.
It would be $4,089,630.39.
Motion to approve that.
Just curious, Commissioner Grammerosa, there are hundreds and hundreds of claim items here on this claims docket from every single department in the county. Are you going to request thousands, if not tens of thousands of pages of documentations for each one of these claims?
This is our job, right, to go through these claims? So I'll step down, I'll second this motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Moving on. Public comment. We're open for public comment.
Good morning. My name is John Mathewson. I am a resident at 8352 East Every Road. And I had a revelation at the last County Commissioner meeting from people at the Regional Sewer and Water District. I didn't know that they were going to be representing. I'm in the area that's covered by their plan, at least the way I understand it at this moment. I don't really subscribe to the assessment that everyone wants the sewer extended. I surveyed about a dozen of my neighbors and none of whom want the sewer extended. Was shocked at the size of the expenditure. $42 million for a little over a thousand homes seems excessive in that they could put up a raised bed, leach field for everyone involved for less money, especially if acquired through a group purchase. Further, I tried to make comments at the meeting of the Regional Sewer and Water District through their Zoom. Was not allowed to make the comment because the microphone could not be turned on. I used the same computer, same Zoom application with other sources without difficulty. But for the Zoom meeting, I was not able to make a comment in that one of the public comments made in an earlier meeting was from someone that identified themselves as a resident of the township, gave an address which was fictitious. If it existed, it would be out in the water of Hudson Lake. This individual is not a voter in La Porte County, is not a property owner in La Porte County, and yet insisted that the sewer is a requirement there. So we have to have a sewer, sewer system installed. That I was not allowed to enter in the public record. This is the first instance where it's in the public record. Further, I'd like to kind of end up to move on. There's been new, new legislation passed by the Indiana House. Our Representative Pressle has a bill which passed. It's an enrolled act, 1402, became public law 232, which allows for alternative systems to be introduced. Would refer to as new technology to Indiana, a technology new to Indiana. I think that would be a good way to go for addressing issues where there's a need to handle waste. That would be a way of doing economic development. We could provide this service to the whole state, basically. Develop the system to handle things, package it, manufacture it, and provide this kind of product to the entire state. With that, I'd like to move on. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments.
For a point of clarification, the La Porte County Regional Sewer and Water District, they are a standalone organization. Although we do have a liaison as a courtesy to sit on the board, we have no authority over them whatsoever. So you have to take your.
I'm here because they made comments at public comments at your last meeting.
Fine.
Thank you for your comments. Public comments?
As you can see by my shirt, I'm a member of the Door Village Harvest Festival. My name is John Dysard and we would like to request some signage for our festival. It'll be held in September. We've come here every year for this and you've been very gracious in approving it. I have a letter that has the cones and the handicap signs and all that stuff on there. I'd like to submit that for your approval and be able to pick that stuff up when, just before the festival.
We will return it. Motion to approve the sign for Door Village. We, we do that every year. You just bring it to the Commissioners' office and we'll see that it gets put up. I don't make that motion to approve it.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I give this to anybody here or?
Give it to our.
Secretary.
Secretary or our attorney. We got it taken care of.
Thank you.
Do we have public comment on Zoom? Anyone else for public comment? We are not closing public comment. Department heads. Do we have any comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
On Wednesday, July the 26th, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, Office of Water Quality, NPDS permit regulatory entities were in La Porte County conducting permit compliance surveys. They conducted audits for the town of Long Beach, the city of La Porte, and the county. The county audit consists of different elements. They look at MCM 1 and 2, which is public education, public outreach, public involvement, public participation, and overall permit implementation and activities. The sec, the third entity is illicit discharge. Has there been inspections of the outfalls? Are there maps? Is there documentation for that? And then the final one is good housekeeping. This is how the county manages its owned and operated facilities. We met at the County Highway Department out on, excuse me, Route 5 and that facility was the one that Item focused on. I have to make sure you understand that the County Highway did an exemplary job with this audit. They were able to get the facility, meet all the good housekeeping standards. Charity Glazer and her assistant Andrew Zimmerman Meyer were incredible. What the staff did, it was the one element of the audit that they passed with, with flying colors. There were not a lot of issues that had to be addressed. So I really hope you, you commend them for that because it was, you have 60 employees out there and they all did a great job. I spent a couple of weeks working with a charity doing a SWIP, which is a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So they met that requirement and she really, really worked with her staff to get that done. They had documentation that met the requirements. However, the other three elements, public education, management, illicit discharge, we failed. The county will be receiving a letter of violation from the Office of Water Quality, the Assistant Commissioner Office of Water Quality, and will be given a very limited amount of time to correct these issues in an effort to try to figure out what the best way to do that is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are 22 counties in the state of Indiana that are regulated under the MS4 permit. 11 of those counties have put the MS4 program in the Office of the County Surveyor. And the reason they do that is because the surveyor is an elected official. He has the opportunity to create a stormwater board under his guidance. He has the opportunity to work with his drainage and with the stormwater issues. If you look at Bill Emerson, the County Surveyor in, in Lake County, Zach Beasley in Tippecanoe County, Baker in Elkhart County, these individuals have programs that are above and beyond. So considering the amount of time that you're going to have to get this together because you're already now failed this first part of the audit, this automatically generates you, to put you on the US EPA Region 5 Audit Perspective. We don't want that to go any farther. We don't want them coming out here. So putting it into the Auditor or into the Surveyor's Office is, in my opinion, after 30 years, the best way to go. The surveyor can implement a board that represents different entities and then go ahead and put it in progress. When this permit first started back in 2005, the state legislature put guidance together for the surveyor. So the surveyor has the ability to manage the permit on your behalf and has the ability to create fees if he has to and to bring everybody together. Plus, he's an elected official representing the people of the county, representing you, and has a lot of overall credibility with this. It's going to be tough, but if you are able to do that, that is my, my recommendation.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
So out of these other surveyors, do they have private businesses as well?
No.
So.
Not that I'm aware of. I checked this before and I asked Bill Emerson, I asked Zach, I asked Baker. The other counties do not allow that.
Okay, so our surveyor does have a private business.
I understand that.
And are, would there be a conflict if, what was the permitting that you said WIP?
It's the NPDS permit under the Clean Water Act. I checked with Item, they didn't think so, okay? They didn't think that would be a conflict because he can't be doing survey work for county required stormwater projects, county-owned and operated projects, okay? Can't do that.
Okay, so do we know for sure that our surveyor is not doing that?
No.
Okay, so coming forward.
You would have to find, you would have to find that out. But here's the, here's the thing. When you look at the other entities in, in a county like the SWCD, the Building Commissioner, any of those, these are appointed positions and if you put the program in their control, you have to have a legal memorandum of understanding with them because then they become your authority to meet the requirements of the permit. So when Item comes back in to do an audit, let's say for IDDE, for illicit discharge, they will go to wherever you put that and those people would be responsible for meeting, meeting the criteria.
So I just have a question. Last year, I know you came before us and it was through your recommendations that we had a coordinator and at that point you weren't talking about putting it under a surveyor, correct?
No, I didn't. It was kind of open to you as to where you wanted to put it and make sure you understood that somebody had to be in charge and it could be anybody that you want really, except as you appoint those, you have to know the guidance for that. So if it goes into the County Building Commissioner's Office, whatever you identify that individual for doing, the memorandum of understanding would have to identify that. If it goes into the SWCD, you have to be explicit as to what you're having them do because then they become responsible for that part of the permit.
So I know we've invited you to sit down with us later this week with the team that we have selected. But at this point now, the coordinator that you were approving last year, what changed or did any law change from last year to this year that you feel now we should put it under a surveyor?
Because of the work around the state and how successful they are and the fact from January till this point, there hasn't been anybody in charge of the program. And so when that audit report comes back and you're given three months to get it done, to have somebody that can do it. If you, and if you put it in one office, what does that mean to you? If you put it in another office, what does that mean to you? The overall goal is having someone coordinate this so that when Item comes in and they say, what's your plan? You don't just sit there and say, I have no idea. So you have to get this, get this.
So again, I, I will just say, I mean, this has been since the beginning of the year under, under the Commission, not addressed and nobody was put into that spot. We now recently have the Council approval. We were able to fund individuals for this and now we, I know that I contacted you via email. So it's kind of bringing it to the Commission and having an open conversation about this and making a suggestion of throwing it under a surveyor. Not really sure whether, you can't address whether these other surveyors and these other counties that have been up and running and doing fabulous at it, whether there would be a conflict of interest with our surveyor because our surveyor has a private business.
Yeah, I talked with Bill Emerson in Lake County. He does not operate a private business, neither do the other two. Their county doesn't approve of that.
Okay.
So that's a process you, you would have to, you know, look at. My question always been, back when even when I was the regulator, that if he has another job, as long as that job does not reflect upon a county project, so he, he can't be, be doing a county project. It's, it's something you have to oversee. But keeping in mind that as you move forward, looking at the entities that have had success putting it in these offices and then of these 11, there are five that put their program in the Office of the County Engineer and then the others did separate departments.
So we've been emailing back and forth and we agreed to meet with you towards the end of this week or next week. So why don't we just keep it offline? Thank you for the suggestion on the surveyor, but not knowing whether there's a conflict or not, I think that that's something that we should have been able to look at before you presented at the Commissioners' meeting.
Well, I think also, you know, in the July meeting, you made a direction of, you had taken the operation of the MS4 program under your wing. At the July meeting, you turned it back to Commissioner Haney. He's been very good at coordinating with me. He asked me to create a budget that would be presented to the County Council. I worked with the Assistant Auditor, got that information, created the budget, sent it back to Commissioner Haney, it went to the Council, it was approved. That budget does not include the hiring of, of three people or a certain direction. It's still kind of an open budget with different options, right?
Correct. Thank, thank you, Ms. Carthals. So yeah, ju- ju- just for clarification sake, Commissioner Grammerosa, at the July 5th meeting, you and Commissioner Brzezinski reaffirmed/reappointed, turned literally everything for MS4 over to me on July 5th. I move forward with. Um, I moved forward with, um, with our consultant and we came up with budget that was presented and, and approved by the council on Monday afternoon. Um, unbeknownst to me or anyone else actually working with MS4, you on your own decided to just go before the council Monday night. Um, I wasn't at that council meeting.
That was actually discussed at the budget hearing. It was discussed at the budget hearing. In the budget hearing, you sat there, I sat at your side. I had proposed the three individuals again, and I was told at budget hearing to come that evening and get it approved.
That...
Everybody was aware of it, so.
That, when you sat down at the table, you gave an option, but that wasn't what was, that, what was handed to the council and what they approved during the budget hearing?
I didn't go to the council without, they asked me to come to the council and that's what I did.
E- either way, before Monday, neither myself nor anyone actually involved in MS4 knew anything about your plan. Um, you went Monday night to the council, presented your, your idea and, um, but yet Tuesday morning, the next day, which you were well aware of, we had an audit with the state. So in your, in your plan that you have here, you have you as an MS4 appointee, you have three other people. Neither you nor these three other people you wanted to be on, on, uh, on MS4, uh, were at that meeting. No one was. It was just the people actually involved in MS4.
A board member at the council meeting.
All right, so they, they may have approved a suggestion, but see, he- here's part of the issue.
Again, this is, this is department head. I mean, we can take this offline.
No, 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 no. We're not gonna take this online. This is closed-door stuff. That's enough of that.
No, because again, we can't go to the, to the, when we asked about the inspections, you keep on sho- shouting out that two commissioners can never be anywhere because it is a violation of open door, uh, policy. And so you can't pick and choose when it's a violation of open door policy and when it is not. So again, moving on, this, we can take this offline. This is a department that, that you put in chaos at the beginning of the year. We can discuss this. We can have a meeting. We can bring forward the individuals that are gonna be working on this. We can talk to the surveyor and we can do this all offline. This is not what you solve.
You don't, you, right now, you do not have the authority standalone to create an MS4 board. You do not have the authority to hire these three individuals to work as MS4. What, if you want to do that, what you'll need to do here officially, formally at the meeting, is remove me as the current MS4 designee, make yourself the current MS4 designee, have the board vote to create an MS4 board, go through all the necessary steps to do that. But right now, you're just running around pretending, saying things and acting like they mean something. There has to be votes. There has to be a designated legal process to do this.
Can we take this offline and then have this discussion, figure it out? And then if we have to bring it back before a commission, then we can bring it before the commission?
I, I, I think the best, the best, uh, the best, probably the best way to move forward right now, I would make a motion to take the MS4 program and move it under the surveyor's office, um, and it, in line with the best practices that the state has, uh...
Whether we know if there's a conflict of interest or not.
There's not a conflict of interest. As, as, as we said with the state, we don't see any issue there. Here with the county, there are already, not just professional standards they have to abide to, but also conflicts here with the, or relevant ordinances and statutes that deal with conflicts of interest that our surveyor does not engage in anything like that. If there, if there is something like that, he'll, he occasionally, his business recuses himself from different, uh, contracts for surveying already. He, he follows the law. He's very, he's very good at his job and he's been around for quite a while. So I don't think there's any issue with conflict of interest there.
I believe this should be taken offline and discussed through the departments. So you, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Fails for a second. Moving on.
I'm sorry, ma'am, Commissioner, I apologize. Just pursuant to your, uh, uh, kind of question, perhaps we could organize an administrative meeting down the road to discuss this and not be in violation of any open door law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other department heads?
I thought that Tim Stables, kind of your last matter dealing with the attorney bill, ended rather abruptly. Just wanted to make a few more comments about that prior agenda, the department head comments. Um, I, I would point out that the council itself, as an attorney, um, they don't get commission approval to hire the attorney. Uh, if the commission doesn't like the council attorney, do they, or what he's doing, whoever he or she may be, do they decline to pay the claim?
Do we know how much your attorney is making? Because I know that you...
These are my comments right now, so I'd like to make my comments and then you can, uh, query me. Um, an additional appropriation is, um, is budgetary authorization to spend by the council that department heads and elected officials need to be able to rely on. The commissioners cannot and do not, yes, you could if you want, but commissioners cannot and do not review every claim of every department. If you wanted to review the bill specific to my attorney, why didn't you ask me rather than ambushing me at a public meeting, uh, and operate professionally? And I will emphasize again that elected officials and department heads, that, I'm sorry, the county would break down if elected officials and department heads cannot trust that if the fiscal body says spend and gives an appropriation for something, that the commissioners may not approve the claim after the fact. This turns into a power struggle between the fiscal body and the executive body and creates a constitutional crisis. Legitimate authorized county bills need to be paid. You are opening a Pandora's box. Thank you.
Any other department heads?
Yes, Madam President, I have a, uh, I have a quick follow-up to, uh, uh, the auditor and the claims here. Um, was your, uh, exception earlier, uh, in not paying that, uh, that bill that you had not seen the, uh, not seen the invoice for it?
Repeat it?
Was your exception to, uh, removing and not wanting to pay, uh, this invoice for the, uh, nine thousand, uh, some odd dollars, was that because you had not seen an invoice yet?
There's obviously a controversy between you and Mr. Stables that you don't want to pay the attorney fees at a larger rate. You actually voted against paying the attorneys because you said it was a seventeen percent increase. I would like to know what we're paying Mr. Stables's attorney because we're not paying it. It's the taxpayers that are paying it. So when you're looking to save the taxpayers, when the attorneys have not been raised in fifteen years...
Twenty something, yeah, about twenty, yeah.
At least fifteen years. And you brought up that it was a seventeen percent increase.
Exactly.
Now, a bill was paid out and I have to an attorney and I have no idea what, it's just a blanket amount of money of nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. There's another bill that my attorney that is going down the pipeline that we're gonna be, it's not nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars?
You said it's a blanket amount. It is not a blanket amount. It's fully itemized, madam, so...
We don't, we don't have that here, sir.
So why didn't you ask me about that?
So, uh, ju- ju- just for clarification.
The same way you just said you were, um, ambushed. Was I not ambushed when you roll out and you say that now we have to take this department and throw it underneath the surveyor? Am I not being ambushed? So it's okay just to ambush?
There's no, there's no ambush there. You had no authority to go before the council to bring on three MS4 people.
Moving forward.
No, 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 because you're, you're saying that you haven't seen...
I have not seen that bill. No, I have not.
That is not accurate because on May third, two thousand and twenty-three, at four thirty-four in the afternoon, you got that invoice in your email. You can go ahead and take a moment to look it up right now.
I am not going to.
May third, two thousand and twenty-three, four thirty-four P M. You got that invoice. So did Commissioner Merzinski, so did I. I thought we did, but I didn't want to misspeak earlier.
Did we approve it here?
It did not need to be approved here.
Okay.
That, that bill was for the council. That was for the council.
And a second. I'm not gonna argue with you guys. I'm not gonna argue. I would like to see the bill that was paid on this claim under Riverboat.
I, I would... Bring it up in your email right now. May third, two thousand and twenty-three, four thirty-four P M.
I cannot, this does not tell me that this was from a May third email.
Respectfully, um...
Respectfully, this does not say it's from a...
Commissioner Graham Rosso, um, I did submit that bill to your office because I wanted the commissioners to departmentally, uh, ask the commissioners departmentally to pay it because they tend to pay legal bills, uh, through their department. Not all legal bills. The council's attorney is paid for through the council's budget, for example. Um, and, um, that, it was declined or it was never, it was never processed. So then I went to the council directly and bypassed you and that's, that's what happened. But you did receive that bill as Commissioner Haney testified, so you're saying that you haven't.
Then I have no way on a line item knowing exactly what bill this is.
You were just told.
Just, I can't trust anything you say.
All right, sure. All right, let, let, let's go through here. We have a bill here for professional interpreters for a hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents. You approved that here this evening. Did you see that invoice?
We need to move...
About Lawson Fisher, sixteen thousand, eight hundred, sixty-four dollars, thirty-one cents. Did you see that one? LaPorte County Community Corrections invoice here for three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Did you see that one? Insight Direct. I could go on for about eight hundred and fifty different claims you didn't see, but you approved here tonight. In your email, you got a copy of this. You are being spiteful, vengeful, and vindictive and flying in the face of the authority of the council.
The line item here does not tell me which bill this is.
None. Literally, the, first of all, it doesn't make any sense. But even, even, even if I were to, even if I were to go along with that idiocracy, tell me out of these thousands, if you saw any of these...
Thank you, so I'm an idiot now. So I'm an idiot now. Thank you. Thank you.
Seriously, any of these...
Madam President, may I address the board?
It's just, it's preposterous what you're saying. It makes no sense whatsoever.
We've already voted on this. We're asking for a copy of the bill and now we're gonna carry this on into department heads.
I would make a, make a motion to approve the nine thousand dollar claim that was left out earlier based upon the fact we actually did receive it. We did have it because you chose not to review it. That's on you.
I have no idea knowing what this claim is. This does not give dates. This does not give any information.
You knew full well. You knew full well what that bill was.
Your idea applies to every other item on there.
What it's, what the check amount is. So has this bill already been paid?
Yes, that bill's been paid and you're not telling the truth, Commissioner. You know what that bill was a hundred percent. That's why you sought to have it withheld.
Code.
That's why you sought to have it withheld from your claims is because you knew what it was. You're not telling the truth. The, 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 I mean, uh, honestly, the idea here is that you haven't seen or seen ninety-five, neither of I seen ninety-five percent of these actual invoices for any of these, but yet you're gonna take exception to this one that's already been approved by the council. Um, i- i- it's, it's just, it's a ridiculous notion. I'm, I'm sorry to use the word idiocracy, but I mean, it's, it's, it's a ridiculous notion that, that, that you can, you can allow these hundreds, thousands, others, but this one that you actually have the bill for, that the council already approved, you're gonna say...
At what point can we move on?
How about this? I make, I, I, I made my motion. Um, if it wants to be seconded, fine. If not, then I'll die for lack of second. We can move on. But I would love that consistency for the other thousand items on there.
A second.
Not for me.
Dies for a lack of second. Moving on. Department heads. We had someone else from department heads?
Charity Glazer, Highway Department. I just wanted to give a couple of updates on what was going on with us out at the highway. Um, chip seal's gonna start on August eight, uh, fourteenth, and we're doing about forty miles. It's gonna take about two weeks, weather permitting. So that's coming up. Um, Johnson Road is now open. The pipeline work is done. That was open yesterday, so that should be good to go. And I want to give a shout out to the guys at the highway. We had over eighty trees go down over the weekend between Friday and Saturday. They worked hard, got them cleared off, and they've been working all week to clean those up. So I want to give a shout out to them for the good work they did.
Thank you, and I'd like to give a good shout out for you as well because you're doing an amazing job at directing that department and everybody in that department is really working hard. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I would say the same thing. Um, Saturday morning, I was out checking stuff, going down six hundred, and this was, man, six thirty in the morning, no, quarter to six in the morning. And you guys had already cleaned the road and there was trees this big that got them pushed out of the way, opened the road, and I mean, a lot.
Yeah, they were out all night Friday and most of the day Saturday getting those cleaned off.
They, they don't get enough credit. The guys are doing a super job. You're doing a good job.
Thank you so much.
Any other department heads? Do we have department heads on Zoom? Closing department heads.
I just realized it was not put on, uh, the agenda just technically with respect to the bids that were due by today for the building project. So if we could, if someone could please move to amend the agenda at some point, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd move to, uh, amend the agenda to include, uh, opening...
Commissioner?
Under, or, or, and, under old business, yes. Um, under old business to, uh, open the, uh, bids.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Commission Guy DiMartino, uh, legal consultant to the flood project. She recalled last, uh, commission meeting, the commission, uh, invited bids for the flood, flood project in order we, so we could meet the emergency statute under the public works. I understand that you all have received bids and they're gonna be presented to you. And I also understand that there was one bid that was sent by email, even though it didn't follow the criteria. It's something that you should at least look at and we can discuss.
Attorney Page has those bids.
I do. I'll open now.
And then just, if you can give them...
Uh, this is from Arctic Engineering. Madam President, Arctic Engineering.
Madam President, this is D A Dodd. They did not send a sealed bid. They sent an email. Madam President, uh, we have a bid here from Prema Star. It looks like, uh, it's a little damaged because of the staple.
So at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have the general contractor take a few minutes here in the meeting, look at these, um, and then make sure that it's all within the scope of the work that we had assigned and then move forward from there.
Okay, so, right, so last time you appointed LaPorte County Project Management to do a walkthrough and, uh, a pre-inspection meeting. So you just want to make sure that all the information in the bids is what was discussed?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure they're in, okay, great. Thank you.
I think part of our bid to, or our motion too, when we made that, was that, uh, they'd be ready to start yesterday.
Or tomorrow.
Tomorrow would be fine.
So can we go ahead and continue and then just when he, once they review to make sure that they've hit every aspect of the job, then they can come forward?
Let's just get a, a motion to table this for a moment until it come back before y'all.
All right, uh, I, I would move to, uh, table this, uh, till we have a recommendation, uh, for, uh, what contractors to move forward with.
Do we have a second?
A second, Ted.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to new business. A, consider permission to approach the council for an additional appropriation for annual maintenance contracts under EMS.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Our annual maintenance contracts are due next month. Uh, they include ImageTrend, which is our report writing software, Striker for our cardiac monitors, our CPR devices, and our comp maintenance, and then NetCloud, which is our modem software. Um, so I'm just asking permission to approach the council for an additional appropriation for these contracts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider appointment to the MS4 board.
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Consider appointment of courthouse security committee. I'd like to make an, uh, nomination to put Mr. Merzinski, Commissioner Merzinski, on this board, um, considering that this is something that he has worked on for many, many years.
I would, uh, second to your motion and accept that position.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Consider providing blanket or, um, authorization for all attorneys working for the LaPorte County in some capacity to be compensated at a base hourly rate of one seventy-five per hour retroactive to June seventh of twenty... to be compensated at a base hourly rate of 175 per hour retroactive to June 7th of 2023. Approval given to the, approval given to, to be compensated at the base, oh, wait a minute. Approval given to the county attorney at that rate. So before we go ahead and we discuss this, I think that, you know, when we're looking at what we're paying some of the other attorneys for our departments, and again, we don't have the contracts, and I know that another, another bill will be coming through to represent one of our departments, and we don't have the rates of those. I think that we should be in line with those rates because we can't ask our county attorneys to work for 150 or 175 when we're paying outside firms to represent elected officials at a much higher rate. So I don't know if you would like to table this to the next meeting, and then we can, we can figure out what, hopefully, they can provide us those dollar amounts.
Yeah, if we, if we pass this, this would be for all attorneys working in LaPorte County. And it would make more sense than having different rates for different boards, you know? Drainage Board, BZA, you know, whatever, that I think that we should standardize that.
And I think another issue that we have is why are certain elected officials getting private attorneys when it has always been that if one of the elected officials are sued, it would be our county attorney who would either represent or appoint somebody? And in this case, I think that they've really gone, you know, they've gone out and they've contracted and gotten their own attorneys. And if this is going to be what we're doing, then every elected official who gets sued should have the ability to go out and get a private attorney and bring those fees back to the county and go ahead and be represented. So I think at this point, we really need to table this until we can straighten out and figure out what the rates are, what we're paying private attorneys rates, so that we can, we can really do a fair analysis and then pay our attorneys based on that.
I think that makes sense to you.
Madam President, may I address the board?
Sure.
Thank you. I would just be consistent with what I stated when my contract was approved back in, back in June. Thank you. My contract involved my rate in addition to any work that I referred out for the county.
Right.
It's been represented to me. Again, I'm brand new at this. I'm.
So am I.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm more newer than you, so thank you for your patience with me. But with that said, it's been conveyed to me that for the past 30 or some odd years, that all the departments and commissions pay their attorneys consistent with what the commission attorney contract stated rate-wise. That's my understanding. And if Councilman Keel is listening in, I know he loves these statements about this is how we always done things, but this is how we've always done things. And I would just, I want to be consistent with what I advised the board before. At larger law firms that do some work outside of our rates, the lowest, for example, paralegal at the larger law firms in South Bend, their lowest rate for their paralegal is $230 an hour. So again, this just isn't for me. I'm the new guy. This is new terrain for me, but this is for the benefit for all the attorneys that we've had working for the county and boards. They're very experienced and loyal. We all know who they are.
Right.
More experienced than me, and so it's really for the benefit of everyone. So that's why I just wanted this to be on the agenda to see what the board's intention was for all the other boards and commissions for the county. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I assumed that what we were talking about here is the other boards for the county. You know, whatever, whatever would be Drainage Board, BZA, whatever. Because when you're dealing with stuff like the Regional Sewer Board, or, I don't know, other departments, if they're hiring an outside attorney, then yeah, they're probably paying them a whole lot more. So that's what I thought that the intention of this was for.
I appreciate that.
And the boards that are working on the appointed boards throughout the county.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I just want the taxpayers to be aware that their money is being guarded safely, that they're getting good attorneys for a below-market rate, and so they are getting a benefit of even a rate at 175 an hour. Thank you.
Yeah, my cousin's in paralegal.
Point, we really need to raise that. I mean, if we're going to be paying for, for elected officials at a much higher rate, then, you know, and I know one of the concerns was 17% increase was an outrageous amount of money to, to increase it. When we look at what we're paying for these elected officials that, that they're asking the taxpayers to pay for their bills, then maybe we need to be in the same line as those attorneys. I mean, we can't ask our board attorneys and our, our council, our commission attorneys to, to fall within such a lower rate than what they typically would make, given the experience that they all have, and not, and yet still have the taxpayers. And again, we, no one's been forthcoming with what those rates are. Can you tell us what those rates are?
So you keep talking about me, so I'll tell you, and we told at the council meeting, this is not like it's a secret, so you obviously want this to be out and broadcast widely, so we'll broadcast it widely in the public. The, the rate for my defense from the first attorney was $250 an hour. The rate from the second, the current attorney, is $280 an hour. And as I've said publicly, and I'll say again, no local attorney wants to go up against Mr. Shaw Friedman. That's just what it is. So you have to go out of county, and out of county, they, they, they're higher rates, and those are still fair or somewhat below-market rates, actually. So that's the situation. This is a specialty need, just like Barnes &amp; Thorberg is a specialty need for bond counsel or Ice Miller, or $400, $500, $600 an hour. These rates are not uncommon. This is a specialty need to protect the county taxpayers regarding potential fraud in billings by a, a vendor that the auditor is trying to protect the county taxpayer. So that's what's going on here.
So with that being said, would you consider making a motion instead of paying 175 an hour? Maybe we should pay at least 230 or 250 an hour to our council, our council attorney and our commission attorney, and then keep all the board attorneys at the 175?
Yeah, Madam President, I wanted to address something you said earlier and also give a suggestion here. So as, as you said, you know, sometime, somewhere between 15 and 20 years, the rate's been 150 for attorneys. I don't necessarily see anything wrong, and I think it's appropriate to raise it to the 175 level. My, the, the umbrage that I had when this came up last time was simply that you had been speaking quite vociferously about wanting a, a new county attorney with a lot of municipal experience. That's where, that's where my pointed out that we're bringing on someone without municipal experience, who's, who, you have been doing an amazing job, Mr. Paycheck, so I don't, there's, there's, I've been very happy with your services. But my point was simply that, based upon your desire to have someone with a lot of municipal experience, and then to bring someone on who didn't, and then immediately give a raise to, that was where the, where I took issue with. But in any event.
Did you vote for it?
No.
Okay.
But in any event, I would, I would, because we've got some, this is, this is a funding issue, and this could be affecting not just a lot of different boards, and cumulatively, the county spends a lot of money on attorney fees every year between all the different boards. I think, I think it would be appropriate right now, and I will make a motion to, to set a recommended rate for all county attorneys of 175 an hour for all, for all the boards we have purview over, and subject to council approval, and so they can get some input in this as well. Perhaps they have some other ideas as well, but they're going through budget hearings right now. I think it would be good to include them in if there's going to be, you know, as you said, it's a 17% increase. We do 17% across all the attorneys in the county. There would be that. Oh, and I would also include in my motion for either the commissioner, council attorney, whoever would prefer, to look into if we can statutorily set rates for attorneys on boards that are created by a statute. So like Regional Sewer or Solid Waste, for example, versus some of the ones that fall closer under our purview. I don't know if you can or can't, if we can or can't do that, but it would be good to get clarification.
Mr. Merzinski, I had asked, did we get a motion? I know that there's a motion on the, on the floor right now. But given the fact that we're paying 250 an hour, 280 an hour for an elected official's attorney, I think that it's only fair that we pay our own attorney either 230 or 250.
That makes sense. What I don't like is paying an outside attorney to represent somebody, an elected official, when they're being sued in their, not as, as their, as their elected position, but being sued as a citizen. That I don't agree with. That's taxpayer money that's being, I mean, what if I got a speeding ticket for 150 bucks? Can I come in and say, well, you need to pay that?
Can I speak to that issue?
Yes, please do.
Before the council. So in the beginning, it wasn't the same commission. Typically, lawsuits, when they come in, go to the county attorney, go to the commission, and then if an employee is sued, then it will be assigned out. For some reason, maybe because of the county attorney was part of what happened, it bypassed that process. And so there's nothing that can be done at this point in time regarding that. The council has, has, the council body has said, pay Mr., they recommended to pay Mr. Stamos's attorney's fees subject to the fact that if he is deemed liable by the trial court that his actions were outside the scope of his employment, then those funds should be paid back to the county. That's what the council, in, in their deliberations and dealing with this for months and asking for a memorandum of law as to the issues. So, I mean, that's what the, that's what the council said. As to what happened when this lawsuit initially came in, Commissioner Merzinski, the, the process wasn't followed. And I don't know where the process wasn't followed. So that barn door is already shut.
So it no longer needs to come, so you feel that, you know, it should never be represented by internally the way that it has historically been?
I think it would be quite difficult of being, you know, a year or so after, with all the pleadings and everything, for either Mr. Paycheck, myself, or somebody else who you, you use to get up to speed to everything that happened. It might cost double. You know, that sort, you know, grabbing something where it's maybe at the 60-yard line might be, you know, it just might be difficult.
So my question is to you, so if we find value in paying 250 or 280 dollars an hour for a private attorney, can we find value in paying our own attorneys more money? I mean, is there?
I can't answer that. That's up to, that's up to the board. But routinely, we have, there have been attorneys that, that received work from the county that had a specialty, like some of the attorneys at Barnes &amp; Thorberg, like Phil Fidenza, you know, who does RDC stuff and does a lot of stuff, and, you know, other attorneys, when they were given specific projects that the county has paid their rate. You know, but I can't tell you what the value is. That's only what you all can say. But I can give you a history on what happened to council with Mr., with Mr. Stamos's bills. So to answer your question, Mr. Merzinski, why it wasn't given to another attorney? It was probably because the plaintiff in that case was the county attorney at that point in time. That's the only thing I can assume.
Yeah, Mr. DiMartino, I think I would agree with that because you had the county attorney suing the county auditor for the county attorney to pick an attorney for the county auditor would be, you know, I, I think would be a definite conflict.
Right. So I, I mean, like I explained in the council meeting, what should have happened, should have been kicked to Gallagher Basset at that point in time, our TPA, and at that point in time, if you couldn't find somebody locally to do the representation, they should have went to their panel council, but that didn't happen. But that, you can't, that's a year ago.
And I'm not asking to go back into, and, and I, at no point in this meeting have I asked what the process was or, or why we didn't follow the process. What I am stating is, is that we are paying, it was debated at a 17% in, increase that it was, we were, we were asking too much. But when you look at the scheme of things and what we're paying other private attorneys are not, can we not put the same value on our own attorneys?
You can, and you have the authority to do so, but I'm an interested party. Because if you pay me $250 an hour, then I'm getting a raise too, so I can't comment as to that.
So.
So.
And I would like to ask maybe of both attorneys, and again, we have to make the final decision. But, because again, I'm fairly new on this board, and to understand the difference between whether we can pay our council and, and the council attorney a larger rate, because they're definitely more involved in a lot more of the work of the county versus the board attorneys. So could, is it possible, or would we have to have someone look into it where we could pay the board attorneys the 175 and perhaps bring up our two attorneys that do the blunt of the couns, of the, of the county work, say $230 an hour?
I could talk for me that I typically do not bill above my retainer, which is based on my contract with the council, and they pay me the same thing as they pay a council member. Very rarely I go above my retainer, and the only other work that I do for the county is usually referred to me by the county attorney. So I, I can't comment as to the council work, because I don't, I don't, I don't bill hourly from time minute one.
But what I'm asking is, is it legal to pay, or is it, is there a statute that prohibits us from paying the two attorneys at a higher rate? Because as I see it, they do the blunt of the work versus the boards. So can we make a motion, like if, if we so choose to make a motion to pay all the boards 175 and pay the two attorneys the one, the $230, would that be acceptable? Or do we need to have that viewed at and approved? So could we blanket right now, do the 175 for everybody, and find out if we can come back and we can pay those two attorneys, whoever they may be, the 230 an hour?
You know, all the other attorneys in town are probably going to have something that they need to say. My relationship with my board is with my board.
Right.
I don't believe that you can set that rate
Okay.
with the council, because statutorily, they say that they can hire an attorney for the, for the council. But if I get work outside of the council work, that's something that the commission can, can set.
Okay.
And like you said, the Regional Sewer Board is an independent board. A lot of those other boards are independent boards. That would be something that I would be uncomfortable giving an opinion today regarding that. I think that one of the things that you all need to look at is that when you look at Mr. Paycheck's contract with you all that you, you recently affirmed, it says that the rate is for $175 for anything that he sends out. So if there needs to be some clarification as to that, whether it's going to be for other lawyers that are doing work, that's something that is in your purview that you will also need to, you know, to deal with. But your, as to your body, you can set the rate at $500 an hour if you think that there's value in that.
And I want to emphasize that.
No objection.
Madam President, if I may, we, we have bills, I just want to say, we have bills where some of the attorneys have started as of June 7th or 8th, increased their rate to 175. The auditor's office would actually like to be able to clear out bills and pay bills. And, you know, as, as long as this remains indeterminate. And then there's also the issue, I think it needs to be brought up about the council itself, where, you know, we've heard from certain council people, people talk amongst themselves about, you know, they have budgetary authority over your legal budget. If, whatever you increase it to, there's not going to, well, 175 maybe, but there's not going to be enough money. They need additional, you'll need additional budgetary authorization to fund legal expenses to the end of the year, additional appropriation. to fund legal expenses to the end of the year, additional appropriation. Do they want to have a say?
We do that every year.
Do they want to have a say in, in rate or whatever? They need to speak for themselves, obviously, in their turn.
Do we not go before? Because obviously you've been in your role longer than I have in mine. Do they not, has it not been customary that the commission has to go before the council every single year for additional appropriations?
Professional services slash legal services, yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, ma'am president, might I make a suggestion? I, I would recommend, so we don't have another quagmire consistently with current bills, for the commission to consider paying all boards within the county one hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour consistent with the current contract and past practice.
As a minimum.
A, a, as a minimum. And, and then with respect to what you want to pay the county attorney and any work the county attorney assigns out to those attorneys at a higher rate, that would be a separate, a separate issue.
We can put it on the agenda for next.
Yes, 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 ma'am, thank you. Yeah, thinking out loud, you know, I said on the RDC, there's, when we do business with some bigger companies, where they come in and we have to pay their attorneys three hundred and fifty bucks an hour start. So, yeah, we, we need to get them work. Can we just table this and come up with a suggestion for next meeting? I do like your idea of.
The problem is with tabling it is that we have the attorney, uh, we have attorney bills right now that do need to get paid. So we would go, I would like to see a motion to pass the one seventy-five with the caveat that we are going to come back in two weeks.
For all board members.
For all the board members right now and the attorneys. And then come back perhaps after we see these other bills and then come up with a fair price for our county attorney.
Retroactive to June eighth, please. I'd make the retroactive.
Retroactive to, to June, uh, June seventh.
I think all the bills started June eighth. I'm sorry for interrupting. Do you know that?
Yeah, the day after the commission meeting is when.
Okay, June eighth is fine. I would make that motion.
There was a pre-existing motion on the floor that we, that we had. Sure. The motion was to recommend a blanket attorney rate of one seventy-five an hour for all the boards that we have authority to do so over and um. Ask for commissioner, ask for council approval and to direct either county or council attorney to find out if we can set rates for some of the other boards that are statutorily created. You know, I know like right now for solid waste, uh, we saw a bill that came over for one seventy-five. Solid Waste is its own independent entity. I don't know that we can set it for them, but at the same time, we have bills that are coming in for one seventy-five when that rate hasn't been raised for solid waste. So we're going to have to get some clarification on that as to exactly what we do there. I, I tried to broach that subject to the last meeting and then the solid waste attorney wanted to defer to the commission for that. So I, I don't even know if we can or not because I didn't get a definitive answer from him on that either. So we're going to have to figure out, can we, because I know we can't for the council, for example. As, as Mr. Di Martino said, same thing like RDC is allowed to have their own attorney, solid waste is allowed to have their own attorney. But then when you look at other boards like FMEC, the commissioners pay the bill for FMEC's attorney and the commission, the commission created FMEC. So we, can we force them into the one seventy-five rate? I don't know. These are questions that someone's going to have to hash out and figure out.
If anyone knows what was past practice with these boards with solid waste and RDC?
Trad- traditionally, it's just been whatever the commission attorney rate was traditionally. Why, why don't you make it one seventy-five, a minimum of one seventy-five where the county is deemed to be in control and a recommendation minimum where the boards are deemed after further investigation to be independent? I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't move that language.
Certainly got this modeled down. Sure, maybe, maybe the better practice would be, would be for who's ever made certain motions to withdraw those motions and then we redo them. That would be.
Sure, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and move to set the attorney rate for any county boards that the commissioners have purview over to one seventy-five an hour and also to um ask for council approval and to have either the council or commission attorney, whoever, whoever sees best fit to look into just what statutorily we can and can't do for some of these boards for setting their legal rates.
That would settle our predicament at the time I was second then.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider.
Excuse me, ma'am president, I'm sorry. I apologize for interrupting you, ma'am president. Maybe also, would someone make a motion to recommend to any other boards that Commissioner Henny mentioned that might be more independent to recommend the one seventy-five an hour? So the auditor can pay those bills, if that makes any sense?
And I'd also like to add that we will review the counts, the commission attorney rates at the two thirty, once we've been able to view what we're paying other attorneys.
So we're going to recommend to the boards that this is following what, what we're going to pay the county attorney? Recommend that they pay the same to their attorney?
Yeah, consistent with past practices, since we don't have an answer for you right now.
The way I believe it's been past practice for the short time I've been involved.
Yes, sir.
And, and also.
Consider um within the next two weeks, bringing it back to the commission, raising our attorney fees to two thirty.
Right, put that all in the same motion. Recommend that all the boards pay their attorney one seventy-five. And we'll bring it back at our next meeting to discuss, you two.
I, I, not at two thirty, I can't, I can't second that.
We didn't say two thirty.
I said, we're going to, we, we are going to consider it. We're not going to do it, but we're going to consider it. So I would step down as president and second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Consider to add to the council's agenda, consider posting of a full-time veteran office.
So we have, can we, we have the information regarding the bids? Would it be possible for, to get a motion to take it off the table so we can discuss the bid?
Sure, we can do that. But we tie them up in longer. Motion to take that motion off the table so we can discuss their findings.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll, I'll allow Mr. Skiot to come forward since he was the appointed project manager for this.
Good afternoon, commissioners, auditor, chief deputy, attorney paycheck, Andy Skiot, La Porte County Project Management, and Larry Levandowski, he's with me in La Porte County Project Management. So we're gonna, we're gonna have some discussion here. We might as well just get that out in the open. So the bids that were received are not cut and dry or plain and simple. So um, I guess I'll start with it, it's a little disappointing because the prices that we had negotiated with the contractors that were on site that were presented at the workshop in hopes of moving the project forward, all prices received through the formal submittal process are substantially higher than those which we had previously negotiated even from the same firms. So there, there's, there's some discussion items here that, that the elected leadership will have to uh make some decisions on, including we'll need some feedback from the auditor's office and, and the legal counsel. Some, uh, I guess we'll start with the simpler ones and then move into the more discussion items. So the, the first item would be the mechanical piping. So we had previously presented at the workshop. We had previously presented at the workshop, uh, a negotiated price of three hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to do that. The, the lowest, we received, we received three, uh, all these are reputable firms. I guess one thing or a couple of things we should get out is that DA Dodd, that was an email. So the, the request said that the pricing should be turned into the commissioner's office. DA Dodd emailed theirs. I, I have no say or that's up to commissioners or legal if that's acceptable to not follow that advertisement. But they do for, for their work, they are requesting fifty percent down payment and they are suggesting uh engineering studies to be done and that cost would not be included in here. And also when we talk about their numbers, they specify that their prices are only budgetary. So it's not a true time and material not to exceed. So back to the mechanical piping, um, the price we had presented at the workshop was three hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, the three, the two submitted bids and the one email price that we received, the firm that was three sixty-nine, um, that is now five hundred nine thousand nine hundred. And the other price we received for that work was two million. Sure. So, so Premstar had originally provided the price for the workshop for three hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred. Premstar submitted a time material not to exceed bill through the formal process of five hundred nine thousand nine hundred. Arctic did not submit a price for that scope and DA Dodd did. That was the email bid and there's just two million dollars not to exceed.
So I guess my first question to council, um, either our county, our county council or, or Mr. Di Martino, because you are working on our flood project. If we had asked that they come in as sealed bids and it now has came in through an email, is it something that we accept? I guess that would be the first issue.
Was the, was the note, did the notice say sealed bids or that the bid has to go to the commissioner's office?
Here you go. Pricing due to the La Porte County Board of Commissioners Office.
It didn't, it didn't say sealed. Pricing will be due to the La Porte County Board of Commissioners Office on or before ten AM Central Daylight Time. So you can accept it.
We can, okay.
It's two million dollars versus five hundred thousand dollars. So I mean, but you can accept the bid.
Okay, so that's the first issue. And then um, I'd just like to ask, so it's the same company. Prior to bidding it out, it was three hundred thousand?
It was three hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred.
And now after the bidding price, it's gone up to five hundred and some odd?
Five hundred nine thousand nine hundred.
So is it because of the lapse of time that we, I, I, I guess I'm having.
I don't want to speak for anyone, you know, fairly because they're not here at the podium, but I'll, I'll say that there, there has been some frustration throughout the job because it's hard when you're, when you're on the construction side, you're committed to a project. You have your resources which are manpower allocated to those projects. And then the job is stopped and then started and then stopped and started for an undetermined amount of time. It makes that unproductive and ineffective to plan on their end. So that can lead to frustration, which can lead to unproductivity, not wanting the work or price increases to compensate for knowing how that works, for, for how that process will flow. So if you know you can be awarded work and you can come in and you can perform that work in a timely and productive manner, you can account for that accordingly financially based on work history of a project. If you do not know how that work will flow or how that work needs to be staffed or how those payment terms will be made, um, you have to also account for that on, on your end because those are incurred costs, whether it's through additional labor hours or if you have to go out on your line of credit and borrow money and pay interest. So all those are, are true costs that are incurred on a construction. And when, when staff is not managed properly, um, the job site does not flow in a productive manner and payment terms are not kept within standard terms.
Just so, that's a not to exceed and it's still based on time and material. So based on productivity and based on somebody cracking the whip, it could be lower. But that is, I'm sure they're probably hedging their bet as to time. They don't want to lose the ability to bill should it take more time, I'm, I'm thinking.
So we actually shut the, we, the project, no one's been on the, on the job site for four weeks now. And.
Five weeks?
Four weeks, five weeks. No one's been on the job site because we actually had to take this all out to bid.
Yes.
We were roughly the three hundred thousand dollars, because I want to be able to comprehend this. We were at the three hundred thousand dollar mark.
Three sixty-nine.
Three sixty-nine. We sent it, we shut down the project for these four to five months. We sent it out to bid and then it comes back at five.
Five oh nine, hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Five oh nine, five hundred and ten thousand.
A hundred and thirty-nine. That's a really good savings. Okay, we can go on to the next one.
Um, so the, the next item would be the HVAC ductwork. So we received pricing again from Arctic, which was who the firm on site that we had been working with. Their not to exceed price is one million six hundred and ninety thousand. We received one other price from DA Dodd also for that ductwork and that price is two million five hundred thousand, budgetary with fifty percent down payment.
And where were we four weeks ago with that?
Uh, lower than the one six nine.
Okay, moving on to the next part.
Um, the next part would be the galvanized waterline replacement. So I had presented at the workshop, um, a proposal from Arctic for this galvanized waterline replacement for a time material not to exceed total of five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Their new price for that same scope, um, after the submission is nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Did anyone else bid for that?
Uh, DA Dodd did bid that portion and they are six hundred thousand dollars. So there, the, the board will have to make a decision based on the firm that was on site, the original budget that was purport, proposed at the workshop, the ability to perform that work in a timely manner and a cost savings or go with the new firm DA Dodd, which is a very reputable firm. I'm sure they could do it. They proposed six hundred thousand, but it does say in the highlighted yellow that that is budgetary only. It's not a true time material not to exceed, it's only a budget. They are suggesting engineering, which is not included and they do require fifty percent down payment. So that would be the board's wishes to decide which path they want to pursue there.
Do we have any other?
One more category is the radiant heat piping. Arctic did, did not bid that. Originally I had spoke at the construction meetings that I had suggested just getting Arctic Service Department to do that. There, there's, there's one area in adult probation that needs to be done. There's a couple, two in the sheriff's department. There's two areas in the sheriff's department and there's three to five areas on floor three, four, fives that need that fin tube pipe rerouted, the galvanized piping. I had suggested also performing that work on time material, how it all is with the, with the service department. We were asked to get prices on that. So the only price we did receive for that was from DA Dodd and that amount is two hundred and fifty thousand.
So everything is substantially higher and I mean, it was not, it was um also the suggestion back then that we have a joint workshop because they didn't want the commission making that decision on their own. So I believed it, and again, perhaps either attorney can, can guide us through this. Should we take this and have a workshop so that the council sees that the job was actually stopped for four to five weeks? We actually stopped the project. The rates are much higher of what we're going to have to pay. We can't probably undo what we just did, correct? We can't go back and ask them to hold the prices before we send it out to bid. So now it is going to cost the taxpayers a lot more money, but at what point, you know, now they want, I don't think it's fair that we make that decision up here when it was a joint venture and it was amongst everybody that we had decided to put this all out to bid.
It's your decision. You, you were responsible for the building. You want to get this project going. These costs now are what they are. Your job is going to be on the property, on the project manager to whip these people into shape, make sure they're not lollygagging and hopefully their time and material is going to come in way under what they submitted their bid for. This is not a bid project in which you're paying for the whole scope of the project. This is time and material. They're still bound and they're still approved by the rates that were, that, that Chubb agreed to. Because in the end, you know, I said, we have to go forward, like this is going to be on our dime. But on the end, hopefully, we're going to be able to get some or all of this money reimbursed from the insurance company. So I don't think you need to go to a workshop that's not contemplated. You want to get this job going. We followed the statutory requirements. If you want to move forward, award it to who you're going to award it to and hopefully you can get back to work this week.
Madam President, may I?
Madam President, may I? Uh, Mr. Di Martino, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, did these numbers end up essentially being, or, or Andy, well, uh, you know, what we think it might cost on a high end so we protect ourselves and then you do the time and materials and you see what it ends up being? I mean, is that, is that, is that what this is?
I, I'm thinking, I, I'm thinking that, I, I mean, I'm thinking that they, they did not wanna come in with a bid that would be less than would be their expenditure cuz then they would end up eating it. So I, I, I believe that if the project manager keeps on them and make, and coordinates everything, that it's gonna come in less. But they're probably hedging their bets, except DA Dodd's seem to be way out of line.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I mean.
And actually in one of the portions, we would be changing contractors if we went with the lower bid.
Uh, the, the one, two portion, so for the radiant heat rerouting, you only got one price, which was from DA Dodd. Arctic had, they put no bid and I'm assuming maybe that's cuz they thought it was not that significant of project. And then the waterline, for the not to exceed number, DA Dodd's, not, on paper, their not to exceed number was lower than the art, number that Arctic submitted through their submission process, formal submission. But not their originally negotiated number that was supplied at the workshop, so that would be a decision the body needs to make.
However, it looks like based on the bid from DA Dodd, you'd have to engineer it. So, I mean.
And they're not the only ones because if I heard correctly, didn't somebody else want um engineering or it's just? Okay.
So a note, engineering designs are not included, however, this is strongly recommended. And this is a budgetary price, you know, according to there, so they're not, they're not saying that it won't go over that amount. They're not saying that it won't be under that amount, but they're not saying it won't go over that amount.
So how much are of an increase do we have now? From, from what we had set at the workshop originally, what was the grand total of the workshop? And if we went with the lowest bids, not to include um D Dot because they want engineering and we at this point would actually set us further back because now we would have to send it out for engineering. Who would be the next lowest bid and then what is the difference between what we were at, at the workshop to what, where we, where we are today?
I apologize, I can't fairly present that at this time because at the workshop, we didn't present a number for the duck work. So the duck work is one of the bigger numbers up, ranging from one point six million to two and a half million. And that number was not presented at the workshop, so all that we presented at the workshop was the domestic water lines and the radiant heat piping. So I apologize for not having that, but that's not something I could give and be accurate on at this time.
Another question I have is, we also, it was really important um to a certain group that it be, give everybody from the community the ability to bid. Did we get a lot of other bids? I mean, wa- was that fulfilled? Were we able to get other individuals other than the ones that we had already assigned the work to?
We were, we obtained, so the two we had onsite already that we were working with were Arctic and Premestar. Those were the two that we discussed were owned by Premestar, so they're kinda sister companies. We had been in the works with both those, um, the only other price we received was from DA Dodd. So one other vendor.
Well, to answer your question, Commissioner, I believe those were the only three contractors that showed up to the pre-inspection meeting.
Okay.
Uh, apparently um Circle R did not show, even though they were invited.
Don't blame them.
So what is the pleasure of this board?
Well.
It's difficult, I mean, cuz we're not actually physically seeing it and yeah, why don't you let us all have the ability to look at the bids? And there is no assurance that they are gonna come in at that lower rate. Even if we have someone over watching them once we hire them. You know, they have the ability to go up to the amounts that they've quoted, correct?
However, they are gonna have to keep their timesheets and that's gonna have to still be submitted to Chubb on a daily basis. You know, you know, like we've been doing our reports and then on a monthly basis, it's still gonna have to run through the project manager. So you're right, but we're hoping that the whole purpose of project management is to keep people on task.
So we're just hoping?
We're just hoping.
Yeah. So it's kind of a shame because we've lost four weeks of work.
Five weeks, we've lost five weeks. This was originally declared an emergency, an emergency. And the insurance company said, we will pay you time and material to complete the project. We found out that there was more stuff damaged, it was, it was not because of the flood. But it's still stuff that will not pass code and has to be fixed. In my estimation, the insurance company would still be on the hook for that. If we would have kept going for the last five weeks and been working, we'd have been almost, a lot closer to being completed. And if there was a problem at the end between us and the insurance company, we could have worked that out.
Well, there is gonna be a problem at the end, no matter what.
There is now when they see.
Well, no, there is gonna be a problem at the end regardless. We, we are gonna, you, the commission and the council are gonna have to fund parts of this project. There's no way around it. Now you've met the statutory requirements and now we can move forward. But we are gonna, the taxpayers are gonna have to pay money and, but we, we're hoping that we are gonna get a substantial part of it back. That's just the nature of dealing with insurance companies.
So, thank you, Mr. Di Martino, one of the um, and, and I know you weren't here at the very beginning of this back in January. But one of the things that came up very early on and it was between the first and second week of January, we were having discussions about what happens if public funds have to be injected into this. And it was clear to everyone in the room that we would have to follow at least some sort of statutory process to get either bids or quotes. Um, it was strongly recommended at the time that because there may be things we didn't want at the time, I think one of the things that came up was um, the building department wanted uh their tile or laminate instead of carpet up there because, you know, contractors coming in in the winter and stuff and, you know, how, how it affected the carpet. And if, for example, it was gonna cost more to do the laminate or the tile as opposed to carpet, that, that would have to have public funds injected into it. So it was something that was considered back in January. Um, at the time, the, the decision by the uh insurance committee was made that they didn't think anything would necessarily go over, so they didn't bid things out, that's why things progressed as they were. Um, had this been bid out in January, obviously we wouldn't be here now because it, we, we have been in that process for a few different things. We'd still be running down the line. Um, you know, and, you know, it is what it is, sometimes, you know, it's, it's not, um, it's not convenient to follow state statute, follow law, follow the processes. But you have to do it. Um, I do think it's important to, to, to reinforce what you said there that, you know, some of these companies maybe, you know, like coming in a hundred and change more here as a top end, that's their not to exceed amount. They're still going to be performing the services at the rate that um, at the rate that was from before, so that's.
Well, I would.
We don't know, but.
Say at a hundred thousand difference because when you're looking at three hundred and sixty nine thousand to five oh, five oh nine. And there is no guarantee that they're going to stay within that, you know, this is all unknown.
DA Dodd had, was budgetary, but, but for Premestar, for example, that was their not to exceed was, in that particular one, was not to exceed five oh nine.
Correct, yep. So.
You know, on that one, it won't exceed that if we were to accept that one versus the two million.
Which I would like you all to consider is who are you gonna award the different projects to? And let's get started with the project. We get started with the project this week, that was part of the stipulation that they can start, that we can go ahead. And, you know, based on what we discussed at the construction meeting, there's a good chance that we're gonna have five done and parts of four done and parts of the sheriff's office done and adult probation done by the end of two thousand three. So we'll have a very good start on getting this project done. So that's my recommendation to y'all.
For the pleasure of the board?
What is your recommendation, Andy? I trust you. I did from the beginning, but I've got the rug pulled off from under both of us.
Mister Commissioner Haney, so he feels comfortable, he should make the recommendation because.
Uh, for, for me, I'm not speaking about this project, I'm speaking in general. DA Dodd's a great firm, we've worked with them side by side on a lot of projects since I was very, very young. When I was an apprentice, they've, they've been around for a long time, they're great. So I don't even, shouldn't say this, you, you're asking me a direct question, I'm gonna answer with a direct answer. It's not fair for me to say that because they have a great firm and there's no doubt that they could perform the work. The only thing is, is if you have a company that's familiar with the site and the works half done. And the works time and material.
Yeah.
And they can also perform in good, in good logic. I don't know how you, how you change that and expect to not incur more costs by doing that more time. So nothing against one firm or another, let's say they're both tens, which they both are tens. But if one's been here for seven months and one hasn't and there's minimal difference between the hourly, hourly rate, we can assume. How do you take seven months of familiarity with the building and the project, throw it aside and expect someone else to come in even if they're equally as qualified, which they are, without that history and perform up to the same standard, so that's my.
Again, what, what was the name of the other company again?
Uh, Arctic?
Arctic and Premestar, so the original suggestion at the workshop before we had been in discussion with DA Dodd was to engage Premestar for the mechanical piping, only because the mechanical piping, that labor has to come out of a different local east over in Saint Joe County, so Arctic does not, is not signatory, my understanding, with the mechanical teams in that area. So Premestar is their sister company, so the recommendation was to bring Premestar in and have them do the mechanical piping cuz they have labor to meet the union jurisdiction areas to do that. And then Arctic was the original suggestion was duck work, galvanized waterline and the radiant heat.
And that would be my motion for Arctic and Premestar.
And DA Dodd does want engineering uh prints, correct?
Not mandatory, suggested engineering, their, their, all their prices were budgetary. So theirs was not a true time material not to exceed, it was a budgetary, meaning that they could go over. And they also required a down payment and that's not speaking against anybody again cuz they're a great firm, if they get that, great. But I don't even ask for a down payment and I'm reluctant to pay a down payment because once you pay somebody for work they haven't completed. As the attorney said, how do you crack the whip on them? If they've been paid for work they haven't done, how do you climb on their back and say and get this done if they've already got advances for that work? That, that, that's another tough lay.
Dog, my motion. Arctic and Premestar.
Okay, so um, the only submission we have here for uh radiant heat is from DA Dodd.
Correct.
Um, so we're gonna have to accept DA Dodd's as, because they're the only one, the other two didn't submit.
We actually had it, did we not have it included when prior to?
I'm not contradicting, obviously, who the elected. My original question to Mr. Di Martino about the radiant heat was, you'll have to confirm for me the value, but I wasn't even sure if that work would go over the requirement to go out for multiple submissions. So we included it because we were doing mechanical work, but I wasn't sure based on financial value if that was even required. So to answer your question, if I knew that number, you guys would have to decide based on if we think that work will even breach that number.
Well, I mean, you, you can't separate parts of the project, you can't, in order to not meet the requirement.
Correct.
But it's my, but what I heard Mr. Skiot said is that, was Arctic gonna do that on the arm?
They were gonna do that through their service department.
Were they, were they gonna do it on the arm?
I don't know what that means.
Were they not gonna bill for that?
They were gonna bill, but they figured it was minimal, so they weren't even worried about. They thought it was like more or less a big service call because adult probation, we're gonna have to say, okay, today's the day, we can drain the system. We gotta reroute this one pipe around this brick column, drain it down, move it over, fill it back up and, and let's roll, so.
So it was more of a service fee versus a actual contracted um piece of work?
They, they never put a number to that for that reason, so the legality of moving forward, I can't speak to that, but that's why they didn't put a number to it.
So that would have been billed at time and material?
It all is.
So.
The radiant heat. Um, it's not gonna be part of the claim, just so you know, it's, it's your money. So.
So again, we have a motion on the table um to use Premestar and um Arctic.
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Given that Arctic's uh low, you know, significantly, almost half the price for HVAC. Um, and looking, glancing over here with not just recommendation uh for, highly recommended for the extra engineering. But also that this is uh budgetary and not locked in. Um, I think I'd be able to uh, to second that and are, are we gonna hold over the radiant heat then until the next meeting? Or uh to try and, I mean, or, I guess my question would be, are, since we only got one bid in, are we, are, are we locked in on that one or can we hold it over to the next meeting and ask Arctic to submit something in writing to us?
Well, so if you, if you plan on getting the sheriffs, if you plan on moving the project forward, we have to come to a decision at least for adult probation and the sheriffs. Uh, I don't know that you have to award it today. But if it's just gonna be a service call and it's not part of the work and can, I think we need to try to, you need to try to sort out the um, you need to try to sort out the issue. However, I believe I, I would recommend that you, you keep the radiant heat out of it. You have your project manager contact DA Dodd and see if they're even willing to do part of the job. Because they might not, and whether they, they can give us a hard price as opposed to a budgetary price on that. And then you all can make a firm decision based on that, does that make sense?
It does.
And I'd retract my motion and change it, my motion would be to hire Arctic Engineering to, to start tomorrow.
Well, it would be Arctic and Premestar, that was your motion?
Premestar was the one that doing the.
Mechanical piping, we need.
Oh, mechanical piping, okay, yeah, my original motion, then Arctic and Premestar.
Do we have a second?
And is this for mechanical HVAC and uh the galvanized water pipes?
Arctic would do, posed, Arctic would do, my understanding of the motion, the duck work and the galvanized water line, meaning the drinking water line is they were originally doing, Premestar would come in and do the hot and chilled water for the HVAC system, which lists the mechanical piping. Because Arctic can't staff it due to jurisdictional boundaries with labor unions.
Gotcha, and then the radiant heat.
I'll get, I'll reach out to DA Dodd and I can re, I can let everyone know.
I have a motion.
Okay, so it doesn't include the radiant heat, uh, I'll second that.
It doesn't include the radiant heat, correct? Is that what you just said?
Right, yes, just wanna make sure, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on.
Thank you, and, and you'll, you'll contact um.
Everyone, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, I, I would like to ask, I, I understand there's a lot of going on in the county, we see that at these meetings. But if there's any possible way to get some uh fluidity, fluidity between legal and the commission and the council and move the bills along, that would allow Mr. Levandowski and myself, if they're getting paid promptly. That will allow us to do a better job of demanding more out of them to perform promptly also. Because otherwise you hear, well, when you, we say you need to cut from five guys to four guys and you need to get this much done and they say, when's our check coming? I'm just being honest, I mean, that's the real world. So if we can move the payments along to the best of everyone's ability, then we can do our job and move the work along in the most economical manner possible.
At this point, how much do we owe you?
One point five million, somewhere in there, one four, one five, somewhere between there.
And we haven't, we haven't been able to allocate the money for that yet, so all that is probably in the works. And you've been off the job for about four to five weeks.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister, you're the, the designated appointee to work on this committee, right?
Yes.
And who is from the council, do they have anybody?
Yes, we have a councilman Novak. But unfortunately, just dealing with the insurance, I mean, that's been something that we appointed the guy Di Martino to. Um, and we, we have been diligently trying to move that forward between working with the insurance company. We did receive a check uh yesterday, yes.
So, yeah, we did. So, yeah, we did receive a check, a million dollars, so.
And that's not going to cover what, just one vendor.
But the council, the council is going to have on its agenda next month to appropriate the one point seven that was previously there for the rainy day fund. So that will relieve some funds. We still have an outstanding bill. The insurance company is going to pay the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to Servpro. So we're going to have a two hundred and some odd thousand dollar bill that we're going to have to cover with that. And Servpro will pretty much be done, except for the industrial engineer. And we need the industrial engineer to clear the downstairs, to clear adult probation, and to handle the wet materials that are downstairs in the walkway. So things will be moving forward, but this is not going to be the last appropriation that we're going to need from the council.
Right.
Understood.
So, but just so, I mean, we're clear, we're, we're at one point three, did you say? One four or one five in the deficit. We've just received one check for a million.
Well, we're going to have two point seven.
Not till, this is August first, and they don't meet until, what, the twenty eighth of this month? We're still asking these vendors to come back on site tomorrow, knowing that we can't pay them. I mean, I just want this to be clear, because, you know, unfortunately, things get out to the public, and they kind of think of our vendors as being greedy, or, you know, here, they've been sitting without work for a whole month. While we went through this whole process, and they haven't been paid, and we haven't had the money to pay them. And so now we're asking them to come back, and I'm very grateful to them, because the whole idea is that they're individuals that live within our county, and they are dedicated to the county, and they really work hard for the county. And sometimes they're demonized, but they're always there for us. And we've just gone through this big, long process, where we still don't have enough money. We're not going to be able to appropriate that money until the twenty eighth of August. And then it takes a little bit of time, you know, to set up, getting it from one account to another account, to pay these individuals. And in the meantime, they're going further into debt, because now they're working for another four weeks before the council's even going to be able to appropriate that money for them.
Right, so what we have to do is, we have to be proactive on the council side. And, and the next month, we have to look at the potential expenses related to this, and get an additional appropriation for the next month, so we don't get put in a position like this. I mean, if I, if I were a guessing man, you guys are going to have to appropriate somewhere between four and five million dollars to get this thing done. And then we'll get back from the insurance carrier, otherwise you're not going to get it done. We're going to be in the same position come October, because this money that was provided by the insurance company is in advance. They're still reviewing the billing from May and June, because they believe that there is stuff that's intertwined, and they're trying to tease out what they believe is a covered, part of the covered loss, and what is not part of the covered loss. Because when somebody pulls out a pipe, they're not saying, well, this is insurance related, and this is not insurance related. So that's the holdup. So there's going to have to be continual appropriation on behalf of this county to get this project done. It's not to say you're not going to get the money back, but, but that's what it's going to require. Otherwise, we're going to be here in April doing the same dance, just so you know. And I'll tell my brother and on the council the same thing.
Thank you. So moving on, consider to add to the council's agenda, considering posting a full-time veteran service officer position as Joe Galick plans to retire at the end of the year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Consider setting a date for an executive session with the county council to interview candidates for the county human resource position.
Mad President, I would suggest August fifteenth or seventeenth.
What day would that fall on? I don't have. The seventeenth is a Thursday?
Right.
Do you have something going on the fifteenth?
No, I'm wide open. And the sixth, the fifteenth would actually make more sense, since the sixteenth is our commissioner meeting. I, okay, August fifteenth at four o'clock.
We would have to throw out probably three possible dates for the council as well, so that all, I would be able to.
Or you could make it available on Zoom. Well, no, it's the exact session, you can't do that.
I, I, I would suggest none of these dates start before, or none of the times, I should say, start before five thirty. We've got several council people that have, have, you know, definite difficulty getting to things before, you know, that happen before five o'clock at least. A little bit of time to, to get from their day jobs here would be considerate for them.
Just to give them enough time out, I would suggest that we go with the twenty first to twenty third and the twenty fourth, and see what works out for the majority. The twenty first, the twenty third, and the twenty fourth, that would be Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Thursday. I'll send out an email, and then we'll see what works best. Twenty second, twenty third, or the twenty fourth.
So Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
Yes. Would that be acceptable?
Sure.
I would, I would also, I would make a motion to suggest, did, did you make that in the form of a motion? Because including August fifteenth probably wouldn't be a bad idea either, if they can make it work. Because I know, I think we just heard from both of you that August fifteenth works for all of us.
It doesn't for me.
Okay, so you're saying, most, to, to set the date, send a query to the council for the twenty second, twenty third, or twenty fourth?
Correct.
At, what time? Five thirty, that's my motion.
Do we have a second? I'll step down and I'll second that motion, that we contact the council. I, I will send out an email to the council, and, and try to firm up either the twenty second, the twenty third, or the twenty fourth at five thirty. All those in favor, say aye. Under Chi, consider bid solid, uh, bid.
Solicitation.
Solicitation for dem, uh, demolition on two seventeen Cool Spring Ave in Michigan City, Indiana. So this is something that we've already been given a copy of, but we didn't actually have the dates. So how would you like us to, just us fill in the dates?
Yeah, just, just set the dates, will work, give enough time for the bids to come in. And then you'll want to do a pre-inspection, you want to do a pre-inspection meeting. I suggested that the, the, the engineer, if he's appropriate, or somebody else is going to need to walk the property with the folks for the demolition. So, yep. And just, 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 you probably want to publish it twice with seven days apart. So just to give you, so maybe the beginning, like if you were to, if you were to do it, put out the notice next week, you know what I mean? You'll publish it two times, and then you can have something at the end of the month, the first of September.
Okay, broken. Can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Consider permission to approach County Council for an additional appropriation of a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents for a thirty, thirty-six month, sixty K lease on vehicles for the Laporte, from the Laporte County Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram for community corrections. Ms. Beatty, are you on Zoom?
I am.
Did we put out bids for that?
Yes, we did, we had about three or four bids, and we took it to our advisory board. And the advisory, advisory board chose the best option that they thought for us to present before the commissioners.
So what is the pleasure of the commission?
Well, I, I'd say, let's go ahead and pass it along to the council, because I've already heard from the council, and I'll just say, good luck with that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Consider community corrections key situation. So we, Ms. Beatty, could you explain the situation that we have going with the keys? And then how much that's going to cost to rectify that, that situation?
Well, right now, we just need to rekey our entire building, and it's going to cost a little under eighteen thousand dollars. And we would be going with J and B keys.
Has your board approved that?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's the pleasure of the council, commission, I mean?
Do you have that money, or does that have to go to the council?
It has to go to the council.
Promotion, I would give permission to go to the council.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Motion to adjourn?
Similar. Second.